Okay. I'm going to call the meeting to order for September 25th, 2018. And we are starting at 6:04. In our opening ceremonies, we'll have a moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Isaiah.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of agenda.
Move adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. It is moved by Ms. Black and seconded by Ms. Franco.
Hello.
Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Adoption of minutes from September 11th, 2018.
Move adoption of the minutes.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Matoye and seconded by Ms. Black.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That carries. And now we're going to go to the student board member reports. And we are going to start with Isaiah Murphy from Costa Mesa High School.
Okay. So in terms of an academic update, as I was just talking about, our AP Environmental Science class, we're going to be doing our year-long research project, outside field work project with the Back Bay Science Center. And we just got briefed on that today in class, so that's looking to be a super interesting project. We're working out our research question that we're going to spend seven months working on and gathering data on to present at the end of the year. So that's shaping up to be a really cool experience. And our mock trial team just received our case, not just last time that we had met on that Thursday. And now we're working on getting our roles and formulating our cases for the competitions in November. And our school just this past week adopted, we have a new club now, Film Appreciation, which I'm definitely going to be joining. And in terms of academics, this Thursday is senior night for the football team and band and cheer team. And are you familiar with the senior night? Yes. So it's where everyone involved with those clubs, all of those seniors have filled out a little bio that's going to be read at that night, and we're going to be celebrating those seniors that are a part of those. And tonight is the Battle of the Bell for our girls volleyball team, which is going to be at Estancia. And our game of the week is boys' water polo at Villa Park. And in terms of current events, as a senior, we just had to submit the first part of our senior exit project, which was just creating the website and putting up a resume on there. So it's the first of a very long, probably arduous process. And second, our AP Calculus teacher and our school's digital fellow, Rachel Klopenberg, just received her iPad Air as that end, so she's using that to take digital notes, which she's now posting on our school loop. So that's a really cool thing that we're all really liking. And some events that are coming up are ASB is currently working on the homecoming dance, which is just going to be held in the gym. But personally, I really like that. I think the school board really, or the school student body is really liking the traditional feeling of it. And this next Tuesday is going to be the ICC meeting, which is where all of the clubs' presidents are meeting, and we're going to start organizing for the Club Rush for fundraising. And that's all.
Thank you.
So your homecoming dance is in the gym?
Yeah.
So are you going to call it a sock hop?
Or under the seat?
I wonder, actually. I think they're going for like a vintage vibe.
I don't think you can wear shoes. I mean, you can't wear heels, right?
They have a cover.
Probably not with our nice new floor.
They have a floor cover.
Okay. I'm informed you have a floor cover. We didn't have that.
Oh, we do. I'm informed. I have no idea.
Thank you. Okay, Alex, you're up.
Hello, everyone. I am Alex Cremoni, the ASB president of Coronel Mar High School. And we have a lot of exciting things happening currently and some things that have happened. So first off, our Youth in Government, a group that mocks California State Legislature and court programs, have begun their training for their trip to Fresno, where they will be competing and meeting with other delegations from across the state. And then next up, we had our first King's Crew meeting last Tuesday, which is a leadership organization that focuses on improving school spirit through athletic events and then encouraging positivity from the crowds. And then next, we are finally very excited to plan our State of the Schools for this upcoming Tuesday, where we hope to be seeing everyone here. And then it will be featuring every ASB from the Newport Mesa School District, of course. And then we also had our club packets turned in this last Friday, and I'm very proud to announce that we had over 100 packets turned in. So hopefully, if they were all legitimate and successful, we will have over 100 clubs for this year.
Wow.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Lucy, I think it's Lucy?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Lucy Demetrick, representing Early College High School. We are proud to announce that Early College High School is now officially an avid emerging school-wide high school. So over 70% of our students are now enrolled in the four-year program that's designed to prepare the students to be both college and career-ready upon graduation. Our second house competition of the year was held this past Friday, and it was the oh-so-popular Game of Puzzles defense. The Narwhals claimed victory for that one, unfortunately for me. Our PTSA also hosted the first of six financial literacy seminars provided by the Wells Fargo Community Outreach Program back on September 13th. And the next seminar will be held at 6:30 PM on October 11th in our NPR. Our first of three mental wellness workshops for our parents presented by the Orange County Healthcare Agency will occur at 6:30 PM on October 18th. And more information about that can be found on our PTSA website. Another upcoming event that we want to make you aware of is our Second Annual College Application Submission Celebration, sorry, which will be occurring on November 20th. On this day, seniors will be submitting college applications, while freshmen, sophomores, and juniors will be attending college panel sessions to learn more about the college experience and the steps that they need to go to college after high school. Lastly, our PTSA will be holding its annual rummage sale, which I'm very excited for. It's held on our campus on October 6th. And this is our biggest fundraising event of the school year because we use the money of the rummage sale to create scholarships for seniors, which are given out to us in May in our annual awards night. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy, so if you want to contribute things to the rummage sale, do you just drop them off at the school?
Yeah. I'm pretty sure it's before school on Fridays, but I think you can basically come anytime.
And just drop it off before then?
Yeah.
I just wondered. I have a few things.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Rafael?
My name is Rafael Arias Torres, and I'm the Newport Harbor School rep. So our academic update. To our TV, our school broadcasting department that releases videos almost every week of our school has released two episodes this month full of skits and comedic moments. These videos include a lot of Newport Harbor staff and students, which is why students look forward to these episodes every week to see whether or not their teachers or friends are in the episode. Our avid program at our school will begin to have a deeper relationship with the Inson Horace Middle School avid program. In avid, we have tutorials, which are handouts that students fill out when they're having trouble with a specific problem in one subject area. They have never done it before in Inson, but they want to try and do it now. So when those students come to Newport Harbor, they know what tutorials are. So Ms. Newman, head of the avid program at Newport Harbor, organized avid students to go to Inson during their open periods to help those students with tutoring and tutorials. An athletic update, for ASB, we interviewed our Newport Harbor High School's fall sports captains for a video, which will be displaying tomorrow in our homecoming rally. And all the captains seemed very excited for the season. On September 22nd, Newport Harbor's boys' water polo claimed the South Coast Tournament title with the score of 13 to 11. This is the first time we won the title since 2007. Recent events, Club Rush was a huge success at our school. The turnout was huge, and up until the bell rang to get back to class, the entire row where people walked to see the clubs was packed. All students, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors and seniors all really loved to see what each club offered. We also saw students writing down information for each club, showing how active and passionate they are in being involved on campus. Some upcoming events, we will be hosting our first rally for our homecoming game this Friday, this Friday tomorrow. That means we have rally schedule, and we have been making it very clear in the announcements of the rally schedule because it is different than the normal schedule. Like I mentioned before, we will have our first homecoming game this Friday against the Huntington Beach Oilers. The entire school body is excited for that homecoming match and will definitely be supporting our school in school gear or colors during the game. Some unique information, we will be having a tailgate for the homecoming game, and ASB members are running it to make sure everything runs smoothly with the cooperation of the staff and the student attendees. And Latinos Unidos, an inclusion club for Latino students on campus that encompasses the unification of the ethnic group, raised over 90-plus signatures during Club Rush. The club's president hopes everyone is able to come and hopes that everyone is able to fit in the room. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jennifer.
My name is Jennifer, and I am representing Estancia High School. One of our academic updates are the Oculus Go. I'm going to ask you guys a question before I go in depth. Have you guys ever wanted to swim with sharks without thinking, oh, something bad is going to happen? Well, this is what it does. It's a virtual reality goggles that, once you set into it, you can go on any app that is contained on it. And basically, teachers, what they're doing, are using for is our English department and our science department. So our science department is marine science, and then also for our English department, our AP English teacher was using them to, sorry, he used it to do a bomb dispose. So one person of each group had goggles, and then the rest of the group had instructions. So they had to communicate with one another to figure out what the person was seeing and how they can dispose the bomb. And so he showed them how to communicate with one another, and it was also a metaphor for, to know that, sorry, to know, like, oh, the person, when you're writing an essay, you're giving them instructions, but they don't know what you're actually visualizing. So that's what his metaphor was. And our medical academy might be using these goggles to be visualizing surgeries or the human anatomy. So it's really helpful to everybody. And then, as Isaiah said, our first Battle of the Bell is volleyball today. And then all our sports team are doing really good so far. And then we have the Parents Institute for Quality Education. It starts today, and it's a nine-week program. It's nine Tuesdays in a row. So basically, we have 140 parents enrolled in this, and it helps parents who were not educated in America to understand what the education in America works. And also, we had class competitions just recently started. And our first class competition was musical chairs, so we got three of each grade. And then everybody came during lunch, which was surprising because a lot of juniors and seniors leave out for lunch, so we're not very united during lunch. But so it's super shocking seeing everybody looking and seeing. And what we're doing with the points at the end of the year, whoever has the most points, we're going to give them like a small tree, also like a small little party, not too big, but congratulating them. And then our upcoming event is homecoming. It'll be October 13, and it'll be circus theme, and it's going to be at our school in the comments. That's it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And Van?
No report.
No report. Okay. Okay. Thank you, students. Those are great reports, very informative. I like that you're covering a lot of different subjects, right? It's good. Okay. Harbor Council, PTA, Ms. Link.
Good evening, President Snell, board members, Dr. Navarro, cabinet and guests. We are pleased to state that our eight parent education sessions have all been scheduled. The locations, topics, and speakers have all been confirmed. And again, our first session will be at CDM October 4th. And that's with Vlad Anderson presenting on Ways to Keep Your Child Safe. And next, we have our candidate forum. Harbor Council, along with the League of Women Voters, Orange Coast Candidate Forum is moving along quite nicely. Every seat is being represented by at least one candidate. And I have flyers on hand, and I put some in the back. And third, we have our College and Career Night coming up, October 17th, 6:30 to 9:00 at Orange County Fairgrounds. And we've created a signup genius, the new digital age, which is great. We created a signup genius, and our chairperson sent it out to all the PTA president, which is supposed to get it out to all of the schools, all the parents, to see if we can really drum up a lot of volunteers this year. And the students are also offered community service hours. Okay? Then our membership challenges. We are having three different types of membership awards this year. The first one is the Teacher's Rule, and that is 100% teacher participation. The winning school will receive $125 to be used for continental breakfast. The drawing will take place during our Honorary Service Awards Luncheon in May. We also have family engagement. One school will be selected by drawing from schools that increase their membership total by 20% from their June 30th membership total, and they have to increase it by November 30th. So whoever increases it during that time by 20% will be put into a drawing. And the winning school will receive $250 to be spent on a family engagement activity. And the drawing will take place at our holiday luncheon in December. And our last award is a new one that we came up with, the Club 100 Award, or Membership Excellence Award. Those are the units that reach a membership total of 100% of their school's enrollment by May 1st, 2019. They'll be designated as a Club 100 Award winner and will receive a banner that they can hang at their school site in recognition of all their hard work for the Membership Excellence. And they will also receive recognition from the Board of Education. Okay? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So moving on to reports, the first one is a report on Ray Elementary School avid program. We've been looking forward to this report. Mr. Lee Sung.
Yes. Very honored to introduce this presentation report to the board. Like President Snell said, we've been waiting a while to do this. But I want to give a little background before I call up Dr. Cox and his team members. But going back about three years ago, I was fairly new to the district, but one of the challenges the board had given to Dr. Navarro and staff was to find a way to better support the students of Ray Elementary. And so we considered many options. We looked at things that are out there that are research-based, that are successful. And one of the programs that has been around now, and I looked this up, almost 40 years, is a program that we have throughout our district. In fact, a couple of our board reps tonight mentioned the avid program. And so amongst several initiatives going on at the site, including focusing on foundational reading, intervention systems, you heard learning center models, there's a lot of great things going on at Ray. But we felt tonight would be a great focus on the avid program. And avid has been around a long time, as I said, in high school and middle school. But fairly recently, at that time, they started expanding to elementary. And what a powerful thing it is that we now have a pathway where students can start from TK and go all the way through Ray Elementary, through T-Winkle, and graduate from Estancia High School in a complete avid environment. So it really is an amazing thing. And a lot of instrumental people that participated and got this going, I see Dave Martinez back there, who's our avid coordinator, and you'll hear his name mentioned in the presentation, but just an incredible amount of people to make this happen. Another thing that was, I think, very interesting to note is that we stated, we designated Ray as being an all-school-wide avid school, which meant that we needed 100% commitment from the entire staff. So we gave staff an opportunity to commit to this and to stay at the school, but if they'd rather not commit to this journey, that was okay. And so we did have several teachers who chose to work in other sites, and that was fine. But what was great is we had a number of teachers throughout our district that stepped up and said, I want to be part of that initiative and to be there at Ray. So it really is exciting, and now we're starting year three. So I thought this would be the perfect opportunity to have Dr. Dwayne Cox come up and share with the board their progress. Dr. Cox.
Thank you, Dr. Russell Lee Sung. So I know I sent you the Power Point presentation. Is it?
Do we have a first grader in the audience?
Oh, here it is. I see. Okay. Perfect.
That's our ongoing joke. Oh, is he okay?
I won't ask Dr. Ballermeister to come help me.
Look at you.
What an honor to be here today. We're so blessed to have this opportunity to present to you today, so we just thank you. So thank you, President Snell, our board members, Dr. Navarro, all of our district-level administrators, and all of our guests today for this opportunity to share about avid and the things that are happening at Ray Elementary School. And thank you again, Mr. Lee Sung, for that great introduction. So we are a school committed to preparing students for success in college in a global society. And something that was exciting this evening that we heard is that you heard Newport Harbor High School, Estancia High School, Early College High School, T-Winkle Middle School, so many of our schools, well, all of the schools where Ray students may end up have avid. So that's exciting for our students to really have a pathway in the middle school, into high school, and into college. So I just wanted to share a couple things, and Mr. Lee Sung did address this. But the important piece that we all had at the very beginning was a commitment, and the commitment was from the Board of Education. The commitment was from all the staff, all the leadership in Newport Mesa, a commitment to Ray. And we had a commitment from our teachers and really our community and our students to do something different and to make a change. And it's been truly exciting. This is my second year at Ray, but it's been exciting to step into something where there's such a high level of commitment. And through that commitment, there was a great deal of support. And the support, again, came from the district level. And we have a director of avid in David Martinez, who's just remarkable and has provided for us so much support at evening events, guidance. When we do our self-study, he's there to guide us and support us and really keep the bar high for us so that we have the very best avid program we can possibly have. And Dr. Martinez, thank you so much. We appreciate that. In addition, we reached out to OCDE, and you made a commitment to support us through Orange County Department of Education. So Mertes Salmon, for example, served as a liaison between OCDE and Ray Elementary School and provided us a great deal of support. So we have been supported. Another way that we're supported, too, is through these avid summer institutes. And so our teachers have been provided the resources to go to the avid summer institutes. Most of our teachers have had the opportunity to attend two different three-day avid institutes, where we are getting immersed in what does it mean to be an avid school? How do you teach the instructional strategies to students? What does it mean to change your culture? What are the systems that you need to have in your school to make students truly successful? So that was a tremendous amount of support for us. So really, when you think about avid, what's a key piece of it is that students walk away from their class today, as well as their educational experience, K6, and all of their educational experience with these strategies and these resources that they could apply in any academic setting. So that's essential. So that's a driving force for us. So they may or may not be in an avid classroom at some point, but they need to have those resources. What can I do to access this challenging text? What can I do to write this rigorous piece that I need to write, or whatever the case? Just to give you the quick nuts and bolts, avid really is a strategic planning tool. It's a great tool for principals, for a new principal, for a school site. And there's four domains within avid, and that is the school-wide instruction. So within avid school-wide instruction, you have what's called WICER, and that's truly avid. It's the writing, the inquiry, the collaboration, the organization, and the reading. And when students are, and those are the tools, for example, that we're learning in summer institute, that we embed in our lessons to increase the rigor, so that our lessons can move, put students on a path to being college-ready. But within the school-wide instruction, you also have the district-wide instruction that's happening as well. And it's married to, for example, our wonders and our SIPs and our bridges. And then you see the school-wide systems. Those are the same sort of systems avid would expect in any school, but they're the systems that we're using here in Newport Mesa as well. Your DIBELS, your SIPs Mastery Test, your IRL, the use of Renaissance. Even as we move into using the Wonder Units assessments, and we looked at them across the district, avid has those expectations that you're disseminating data, you're sharing data as teams, and you're making instructional decisions based on data. In terms of leadership, avid would say that there needs to be strong school-wide leadership that sets the vision and tone that promotes college readiness and high expectations for students in the school. And then in culture, avid school-wide culture is evident when the avid philosophy progressively shifts beliefs and behaviors, resulting in an increase of students meeting college readiness requirements. Just today, I had the opportunity to hear Sean Bolton say that his avid program's really growing. But one of the things that they recognize as a tremendous need is particularly our students, parents who didn't grow up in the States, for them to really have a clear understanding of how do they navigate this college entrance experience, like preparing their child for college, choosing colleges, applying for colleges, and so on. And that's a piece that we at Ray are beginning and avid schools are working, and that's that culture piece. So just one last piece here is that avid really does hold schools accountable to a very high level. And so the way that we do this is really through the avid certification instrument, where all those research-based strategies that are embedded in those four domains that I just showed you, the school has to self-assess each year, and David Martinez is on us to make sure we do it properly. How are you doing in those four areas, based on those research-based pieces that avid has recognized? And then you also create a school-based plan, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. But how are you doing in regard to your continuous improvement cycle in regard to your school-based plan? And then looking at the systems within your school to ensure that all students, we're moving students toward college readiness and success in a global society. So today, in our presentation, are my wonderful teachers here, and I apologize for not introducing you at the very beginning. Nicole Sal, third-grade teacher, Nancy Vera, first-grade teacher, and Mark Africano, sixth-grade teacher. And they are going to bring the life to this presentation. I so appreciate not only the three representatives here, but we just have a remarkable team of teachers at Ray Elementary School that have absolutely made this program a success. So as we go through this presentation today, you'll see these domains primarily through the student work.
And they're coordinated.
I know. You did it. Okay. He's even got, great. Wow. Okay. If you're in avid school, you're yellow flowers.
Yeah, there you go.
So I'm going to start with the culture at Ray. And avid is changing the culture at Ray. We're empowering students and families to believe that college is in their future. And so I get to show you a peek into Ray. And one way that we do this is, you can see, we have, each classroom has adopted a college. And sometimes it's where the teacher has gone to college, or maybe just a favorite college. And so we put things up, and we teach the students about it. They research it. They learn the chants and the mottos, and they kind of become that college for the year. And they get really into it and really excited. And the plan is that if they've gone through TK up through sixth, then they've had at least seven good research colleges that they have learned about and are excited about. And then one of the main things- And then one of the main things that we do to change our culture right now, that Avid has four family nights a year, excuse me. And so here's a little peek into one of them. The first one is Avid in the Classroom, and you're actually going to get to see all of those slides today, so a slide from every grade level and how we are incorporating Avid in the classroom. We also have a literacy night where we gave books to students. One of our goals was to get books into their homes. And we gave, we thought our goal was like two, three books per child that came. We ended up with so many books donated, they were walking out with boxes of books to take home. So it was really incredible. And then we have a STEM night, and that's always a very popular one because that's a lot of fun. And then this one that you see here is actually our final one of the year, and it is our college night. And so those college, the boards on the bottom that you see, it's like a college fair. And so all of our sixth-grade students actually do a district report, and so they participate in it, and each have a board there. And then also, before, when I showed you the classrooms, each classroom, even our first grade and our TK, they have their own board as well. And then the top picture you see, that's a fifth-grade class, had some representatives there. And so as people walked around, they answered questions about their college and shared information. So it was really fun. You can see down there, it was very successful. And at those nights, you can also see that on the top, some staff members, and the bottom with the kids. And so we encourage staff to be, and most of our staff is at every one of them. And then we just have some that are kind of leading and guiding, but the next one is the best one, because these are the students leading those nights. And so it's not about us leading them. We are kind of setting them up, but we are empowering the students to lead. And these are actually some third graders from last year, and they are presenting what you're going to see later tonight, up on the stage. And they are the ones teaching the Avid to their families, which is also empowering them for the future. And then another program, I actually heard it mentioned from one of the student reps, was the PK Program, which is the Parent Institute for Quality Education. So it was really exciting to hear that it is also offered somewhere else in our district. And so just like they said, it's a nine-week program that is teaching parents, what is a report card? What are common course standards? How do I talk to my teacher if I want to parent conference with them and it's not parent conference time? How do I be an advocate for my student? How do I get them to college? Is this really, can this really happen? And this picture is really a favorite of ours, and Dr. Cox was mentioning to me as we were preparing that they graduate at the end of this nine weeks, and it was like college graduation for these families. They just, they did feel empowered. They did feel like they accomplished something, they learned to become advocates for their children over that nine-week course. So we're going to move on to instructional strategies. And Avid gives us instructional strategies with a common language. So they're not all new strategies that we have to learn. It just brings all of the best instructional strategies that we've all heard and learned all of our lives and puts them all together and makes a common language from TK all the way through sixth grade. And so you're going to get to see examples of somebody in Ms. Vera's class who is learning note-taking strategy, that then comes to my third-grade class and learns the next part, and ends up in Mr. Africano's class doing Cornell notes, and then goes on and becomes these students. And so I think you'll love that you get to see that progress, and we're going to show that to you next.
As already mentioned, our Avid strategies are embedded into all of our classroom instructional practices, and as early as TK, our students are becoming familiar with the Avid language. So as you can see on the picture right there, we have slant. That's part of our Avid language. All of our students from TK to sixth grade know and are expected to know what slant means. So once we say slant, they know that they need to be sitting up straight, that they need to be listening, they need to be asking and answering questions, nodding for understanding, and tracking the speaker. So whether we are inside the classroom, whether they're sitting at their desk, or if we're sitting at the rug, they know that slant is expected. Even at Flag Deck, when we have all of our school together, TK, actually even pre-K, and to sixth grade, we say slant, and they know the expectation. So it's really great to see how they're becoming familiar with the Avid language, even from TK. Another part of our Avid strategies that we like to use and that we actually like to align with our wonders curriculum is Avid weekly wrap-ups. Here is an example of an Avid weekly wrap-up for kindergarten. In kindergarten, it starts really basic. They're just drawing a picture of what they learned based on the essential question for the week, and they're drawing and labeling. You'll be able to see how this strategy is used in sixth grade and the growth that they make from kinder to sixth grade, and it's incredible. Right here, as my fellow colleague mentioned, this is my, an example of the Avid two-column notes. Every grade has an Avid notebook, and this is an example of the Avid notebook for our first grade. We like to write our new vocabulary words and new math concepts that we're learning in it. Here's an example of fractions we were learning for the week. They're writing the word, and they're writing the definition and a picture to go along with it. Avid has a very strong focus on teaching students effective note-taking skills. So as she mentioned, we start with the basics, two-column notes, but as they progress in the school years, they'll eventually get to what we want, which is Cornell notes. And we want to take, we want to make sure that they take ownership in their notes and their work, so that we teach them that we're not just writing something. We're writing it so it's a useful tool that we can go back to and use when we need a little refresher. This is an example of our successful student. Our goal is to prepare students for college and a global society, but in order for us to do that, we need to make sure that students understand how they will get there and how they can be successful students. So this is an example of an activity that we like to do in the beginning of the school year. As a class, we come up with a list of characteristics that make a successful student, and then they get to draw their student. A student that wears their uniform, a student that wears a watch because they want to be at school on time. They bring their folders, they bring their backpacks, and they love doing that and get creative with their own successful student. On the left, we see the graduation caps and the yellow pennant. On that one, we like to have them write a goal. Avid has, an essential part of Avid is goal-setting. So we like for students to come up with a goal and with strategies of how they will accomplish that learning goal for the school year. And it's always revisited, and we want them to take ownership. So having them set their own goals and having them set their own strategies really gives them that ownership that we want them to have for their own learning.
So since I'm third grade, I'll talk about third grade. But this is their Avid binder, and they get it beginning in third grade. They have them third grade through sixth grade, and it's really like graduation time. They get, in K through two, they have colored folders that actually match the colored tabs that you see for each subject area. But in third grade, they get the one-and-a-half-inch binder, and it's on their desk. And you can see the cover. It has their year of graduation and their name, and so it really is a rite of passage. And there's an agenda in there where we write in every day. There's somewhere for parents to sign, so communication between the parent and the teacher and the student. And we use that for their homework. And then all of the tabs, in third grade, we start putting the notes under all of those tabs. So again, like Nancy says, it would be useful that we actually go back and refer to them. And then this is example of fourth grade. This is a strategy called a one-pager. It basically is kind of a summary or a way to show your learning for something. And in this case, they read the book, Frindle. And I know some favorites, right? I see them down there. Frindle's a great book. And you can see what they do is they take some vocabulary from there. They take some pictures that summarize the book. There's a certain border that they do, and it all has different ways of how they learned. And the great thing about a one-pager is every child can do their own. So these are really artistic and beautiful, but I've had students, they're just very, they're not ugly, they're just mechanical and very, you know, and that's okay. It shows their learning, and it can get a grade just like something that is that colorful. So it's nice that it can be whatever is their way of showing, expressing their learning.
One of the best parts about being a sixth-grade teacher is that you get to benefit from all the hard work of the grade levels below. And as you can see through all the pictures and different examples of work, it's consistent throughout K through six. This year was only the third year that the kids had been in, but the kids that have come into my class have come in completely prepared, and I know what they're, what they expect, and they know what I expect coming in. We were doing vocab the other day, and the kids didn't know what the word was that I put on the board for the 400th time, and I heard a bunch of writing, I mean, of paper rustling, and they were going back in their notes and looking up the word. And that's the first time that that's happened since I've been at Ray. There's a feeling on the campus that is very exciting. And I know that the numbers are going up, but if you could see the respect levels that are going up, the parents coming to the school, the kids knowing that we value their language and that we value their lives and that we're interested in having them succeed in this world, it's very powerful. And so in sixth grade, all of the different writing strategies and inquiry and collaboration, organization, reading, it all comes together. Avid is big on reflections. So in our one-pagers, not only do we do the week's reflections in a much more advanced way, but the kids write journal entries in their notes as to what they've learned and what they would be interested in learning more during any one of our books or any one of our different lessons. And that's part of the inquiry piece. So our kids, I think if I could, if I could express what is happening is that there's a respect. They're walking with more dignity than I've seen in the first two years. This group right here, when the Avid team pitched to the staff that we wanted the kids to do all of the presentation, the staff was like, "Yeah," you know, "let's work for us." So the kids in every grade level came together and came up with something that they were going to present at the Avid night, and my sixth graders emceed it. And I didn't even tell them what to do, but they translated to Spanish as well. Everything that they said in English, they said in Spanish. It was really a wonderful night, and that was only the second year.
Thank you, Mr. Africano, Zero, Mrs. Basel. Great job. Just in, just in wrap-up, there's so much to share about Avid. I just couldn't, we couldn't do it all in 20 minutes. But I think what you've seen tonight is samples of this strategic planning tool. You saw samples of strategies for kids to learn WICR, the writing, the inquiry, collaboration, organization, the reading. So you saw examples of student work. You also saw, well, we've talked about some systems, but many of the systems that Avid recommends are the systems that we know are really good in Newport Mesa, including looking at data like DIBELS, your IRL data, analyzing data with teams of teachers. In terms of the leadership, you saw examples of how we're leading. Truly, this team is the leadership team in terms of what our next steps are. You also saw really good examples of the Avid culture. But I want to shift a little bit here, and the way I think of Avid is I think of it as a plate. It's really important, because we talk a lot about initiatives. So it's really important, as you look at this, you could think, "Wow, that's a school that has another initiative." But really, Avid is a plate. It's a, it's a plate of philosophies, and it's actually simplifying things for you in many ways as a leader. And then you put on your plate the things that are important to the district. So for example, on our plate last year, it was all about wonders and bridges and doing an excellent job with that and the systems that we have in place. And if you think about the board priorities, the board priorities fall right into that. So if you think about PBIS or restorative practices, those are systems. PBIS is a behavioral system to bring out the very best in students. Or all the work that we're doing with assessments or the work we've done in adoptions would fall under instruction. So we appreciate, we so appreciate what you've done for us, the program that you've provided for us in Avid, and we know that it's moving our students toward being college-ready. So I specifically want to thank the Board of Education, all of our district leaders, all of the teachers at Avid who've really come to the plate and said, "We want to do something different that we know is great for kids and our school community and all the students at Avid." So we're truly appreciative, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Patoye.
Couple questions. I know the, the big change that we had when we first created Avid, it said, "Ray, yes, you want to be in Avid school? Yes, great, good." How stable is your staff? I mean, have you had much transition in or out? Or have you, because you've grown?
Well, thankfully, Newport Mesa added two teachers to Ray Elementary School this past year, really because of our numbers. But it felt like a gift because our classroom numbers are the lowest they've been in a long time. Is that true? With staff?
Class size?
He tells me every day how pleased he is with this. So we added, so we ended up having four, four positions. Two, there were two temps that you had to interview. So really, that's, so in terms of stability, we've become much more stable, and we're seeing our teachers remain. And really, of those, those four teachers, we hired two of them were because of additional teachers being added to the school site. So I was, we were super pleased. So thank you.
I have another global question. It's probably going to be you answering it. Has the data backed up the work that your staff has done? I mean, I understand, I totally understand that the work that's done in kindergarten doesn't show up till third grade, and even then, it really doesn't show up till sixth grade, and it's, it's not something that you're going to see right away, but you can't see growth. I mean, we've got lots of data and lots of measures and...
Yeah. Well, I, you can imagine, I could give you a really, really detailed answer. I could give you a general answer.
I'm okay with general.
I'll give you a general answer.
I'll come over some afternoon for two hours.
Yeah, you come over and we'll look at data together. But we're really pleased, when we look at our DIBELS numbers right now, so that's really focusing on those K3 numbers, we're seeing numbers that look very much like the E-side. We're seeing 80% of our students in K being, having strong foundational reading, which is extremely exciting. We more than doubled what the proficiency rate is for EL students at Ray. When you look at the district EL proficiency rates and you look at Ray's proficiency rates, we've more than doubled the proficiency rate among our EL students, which is truly exciting. When you look at our students, once they've been ARFEP, we're higher than the district average, so our proficiency rate of, once we ARFEP them, or they're no longer recognized as an EL student, we're higher than the district average. So we're doing really well among the students who are most needy, which is where we want to focus.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mrs. Black.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate each and every one of you because, you know, we've been kind of staying away and letting you do your thing, so now you've enticed us.
Yeah, so good luck. We'll be over. Now we're going to come visit.
Especially, you know, sixth grade, because it is really heartwarming. And also, you know, I serve along with Mrs. Franco on the D-LAC Committee, and our parents are excited about it. They're spreading the news, so we really like to send our congratulations to the families because that's really why it's been so successful. It's the collaboration, and you've allowed that. So congratulations, Principal Cox.
And welcome to Ray, please.
Welcome to Ray. As a teacher, I was, oops, I should say, I never minded working hard when I knew it made a difference. And, and you get, I work harder and harder the more difference it makes. So I totally understand that you're probably exhausted all the time, and thank you for making it through last year. But it fills our heart with joy when you receive, when you see students coming, especially with you, Mr. Africano, how they, how they come up, like you said, "Oh, my gosh, look what I've got now." It's spectacular, so congratulations.
Mrs. Yelsey.
I just think also, we need to commend the entire staff because it takes time to become Avid-trained.
Oh, yes.
And it's remarkable that every single teacher at your school has decided to do that, and I think that's really what's going to keep this thing progressing as we move forward. It's, yeah.
If I could reiterate, the feeling on the campus is something's happening, and so it's a, it's a good feeling. And so it's a, it's a joy to go to work.
Yay. That's great. That's great. Thank you. That was a great report.
Thanks.
Did you want to say something, Mr. Fine? You need to come to the podium really quick. I'm going to let you, yeah, because you're the student rep, and this is about students, so.
I've just received intel that I do have a report for you tonight. Should I deliver that now?
Sure. No, go ahead.
All right.
I didn't know if you had a question.
No.
Okay, good. Your report was late. You need new staff.
You said you need new staff, right.
Anyway.
Anyway, I'm Van Fine, representing Back Bay, Montevista. Grit, guts, resilience, initiative, tenacity, our new PBS RE brand and mantra, is going very well so far. Students exhibiting a grit incident, earn grit cards that enter them in raffles for prizes and early releases for Friday barbecues. Mr. Trokey and Mr. Mayer are currently in Sacramento with a larger NMUSD team and are excited to challenge our advancement from silver to gold recognition in 2019.
Wow.
To do this, our staff is working hard to incorporate PBIS and restorative practices into the classrooms. Our new yoga class is off to a great start, as students who have never experienced yoga and mindfulness are really enjoying the class, and we expect the program to expand. ASB managed a carnival-like booth of the lions fish fry this past weekend. It was a great success, as dozens of students and staff members had a blast raising funds for our ASB and also spread the word to our community about our amazing school. Our guest speaker series was super powerful this week, as JP Van Houten of Van Rocks spoke to our students about his journey battling many adversities in life, most remarkably his battle with Parkinson's disease. JP also shared about the need to find something that you are passionate about and make it your career. Tomorrow, we have an early dismissal in ASB, but we'll be hosting a staff-student potluck lunch. I'll be bringing deviled eggs. We also have our first House of Representatives meeting that features a representative from each period for class that meets with administration and ASB to discuss concerns and issues students have on campus. We did this last year, but it didn't go very far, so we're hoping that this year, with our higher degree of initiative that we have with our new ASB coordinator, we'll be able to really make something out of it.
Excellent.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Van.
Thanks, Van.
Okay, so, moving on to 12B, a report on the United Way 2018 campaign.
Thank you. So, each year, the Board of Education and the employees of Newport Mesa Unified School District have given support to the United Way, which provides financial assistance to numerous community organizations within the cities of Costa Mesa and Newport Beach. These community organizations provide services that improve the quality of life, address critical needs such as family support services, child development, youth education, and community health. Last year's contributions from our employees were over $29,000, and we hope to build on that this year. And tonight, we have some very special guests with us. I'd like to invite them to the podium now. Sandra Bensworth, she is the Chief Relationship Officer with United Way, and she is our representative. And Bill Vaughn, who is our Corporate Engagement Person from United Way. And so, we're really pleased to have them here today and to be able to introduce them to the board.
It's a pleasure to be here. We're really honored, and we want to say we appreciate the work that you do every day in improving the lives of students here locally. We are thankful for your support, and your impact is making a huge difference in our community as we're trying to face the most critical issues facing Orange County, so we can't thank you enough. We value our relationship with Newport Mesa Unified School District, and we look forward to having a continued partnership. Thank you. We have a plaque here for you to thank you for your contribution.
Thank you.
Do you want to do a picture?
Sure she does.
We take pictures of everything.
Absolutely.
Back up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Nice to meet you.
And we're huge Avid fans.
So, moving on to informational items.
We're going to Mr. Lee Sung as an information ally tonight.
Very good. I'd like to give just a brief introduction to this informational item, which is entitled, "Receit of the International School for Science and Culture Charter Petition." The petitioner for the proposed International School for Science and Culture Charter School delivered to the district office a charter school petition, seeking approval to operate a charter school within the district's boundaries. Under the law, the district board must hold a public hearing on the provisions of the charter and subsequently take action to approve or deny the charter. The board's timeline for acting on the charter request starts with the district's receipt of the charter petition tonight at this public hearing, or excuse me, public meeting. We anticipate that this public hearing will be held at a special board meeting on October 25th, at which time the board will consider the level of support for this charter from district teachers, other district employees, and parents. The district staff will analyze the charter in accordance with the Charter Schools Act and will make a recommendation to the board on whether to approve or deny the charter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, 15, Superintendent's Report. I'm sorry. Okay, I left the community out. Oh, dear. Okay, guards.
And I get to read tonight. Woo-hoo. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on consent calendar agenda items or on non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Per Board Bylaw 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes to cover one or multiple topics, and speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers, and there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. The board, staff, or members of the public may request that a specific item on consent may be moved to discussion action. Requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the board takes action on the consent calendars. Depending on the nature of the comments, the board president or superintendent may respond or the president may call upon board members for brief comments, questions of clarification, provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information, or request the superintendent to report back to the board at a subsequent meeting concerning the matter. However, in compliance with board policy and the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not permitted to take action on nine agenda items. Any board member or member of the public may request that a matter within the jurisdiction of the board be placed on the agenda app of a regular meeting by submission of Board Bylaw 9322 Agenda Request Form to the superintendent. When a request is made during a public meeting, all verbal requests must be followed with a submission of a Board Bylaw 9322 Agenda Request Form to the superintendent. When addressing the board, it is helpful if you state your name and address for the record. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video that is posted as a courtesy on our website.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Dowdy.
Good evening, Mrs. Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, and the community. I'm Brett Dowdy. I'm president of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. And firstly, my comments were largely prepared for item 13 related to the charter school. I'm not sure if it's better for me to ask questions at the public hearing or if I should ask them now, so just some advice from you.
I was going to say, it's better to ask them at the public hearing.
Okay, then I'll hold those comments until then.
Thank you.
So, just impromptu, so a couple of things. One is, I am part of the CFT Retirement Policy Committee, and I just spent the last few days last week in Sacramento with the CalSTRS Board, and they are doing excellent work. And I first want to thank that board for the hard, hard, detailed work that they're doing to look after our pension and proper stewardship of the money invested in that pension program. And I was very impressed by that board and how they're operating and how seriously they take every little detail about the operations. And then, secondly, I wanted to inform the board that within CFT, we're looking at ways to work with school board associations and ASCA and other groups, you know, in education. How can we look at the long-term viability of supporting the pension programs and how, what's the direct impact on school districts as well, and how to try to kind of work those things together? So, that's a project which I personally will be very involved with, and I'm looking forward to engaging more with all of you and, you know, our finance officers, as well as some things start to materialize as we start looking toward things down the road. We have some state meetings this weekend for the Retirement Policy Committee to come up with some ideas, and then I'll come back and try to interact with you on these to see what we can, to look for, for just the long-term health of this program. And then, finally, a public services announcement. It's not too late to register to vote. It's not too late to register for absentee ballots. Please do so. Every election matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Gary Logan.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Fred Navarro. Gary Logan, CSCA parliamentarian. Just wanted to give you an update on some of the stuff that we took care of at our state convention, our 93rd State Convention that we had. Chapter 18, Newport Mesa Unified School District, it was a third try, but we passed legislation to take campus security, campus safety up to legislation to rewrite the existing laws that are there, to add more oversight, more training, to keep it from being a one-time training your entire career to, let's get training every two to three years, updated training for our campus security and safety personnel. The requirements of what is considered noon duty aid and all that, people who actually watch our students will be changing. So, it'll be another few years as it moves through Sacramento, but hopefully, we'll see what comes of it. At our state convention, they mentioned our CalPERS program is still healthily funded and moving forward and solvent for the future right now. On another note, CSCA has what is referred to as a Dorothy Bjork Foundation. It's our nonprofit outreach program that we use for funding and financially helping members throughout the state as needed. And with the fires and everything, we had last year was a record withdrawal on the fund. And at state conference this year up in Sacramento, we were flying into the smoke. We were flying into everything with the fires there. We raised an all-time record for the year. We raised $52,000 to superfund the humanitarian fund for anybody who's a CSCA employee anywhere in the state who would need it.
Wonderful.
Chapter 18 put in over $1,000 into that. But, I mean, last year at state convention, we raised $34,000. This year, we raised over $52,000.
Wow.
So, that's just what I wanted to let you know, what CSCA is doing here at Newport Mesa and what we're doing at a state level, and thank you for supporting us.
Thank you. Thank you. Patricia Gould. Gold. Gold?
Gould.
Gould.
So, good evening. My name is Patricia Gould, and I want to thank you for accepting the receipt of our petition. I want to reassure you that International School for Science and Culture, ISIC, is organized by dedicated professionals. In our group, we have university professors, charter school consultant, attorney, business manager, educator, and above all, parents. We also have support from California Charter School Association, EXED, and Young Mini and Corp Law Office. I will be the founding principal for ISIC. I have 25 years in the field of education, 18 years as school administrator in both public and charter schools. When considering this district and student population in service, we researched Newport Mesa's instructional programs and goals, and found our philosophy and vision aligns with Newport Mesa. We designed our school to provide a safe and caring environment where all our students will strive. We will be providing next-generation science standards instruction thematically to all students, to include all curricular areas, and we will be teaching all our students Mandarin, Chinese, and Spanish. With the demand of developing 21st century skill set, we will make sure our students are critical thinkers, collaborators, creative, communicative, and technologically savvy. We look forward to sharing with you our program and demonstrating the level of parent and community support at our public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Melissa Taravella.
Hi, Melissa Branch Taravella, Newport Harbor High School. I'm a Spanish teacher there and a softball coach, and I always thought that if you wanted to get an answer, you should go to the top when people aren't listening to you. So, all I'm asking you guys to do tonight is maybe help me find an answer to a problem that I've had for a little while. In 2009, there were bathrooms built on the softball field. The boosters raised money for that, and when Davidson Field was renovated, it was taken offline, which of course, I understand, the water. When Davidson Field was opened, the bathrooms were not up and running again, and I never got a straight answer as to why. Dr. Bolton has asked, Cusick has asked. I have also personally reached out to Dr. Bauermeister, I'm going to say this name wrong, Arazesny?
That's pretty good.
Thank you. Mr. Marsh, Mr. Morris, Mr. Rebenstorf, Dr. Murray at our school, and just getting a lot of different answers. All I would really like to do, of course, I'd love to have them up and running. We have a key to the field. It takes about four minutes to walk over and back, and during a game, that's a lot of time, especially if it's my pitcher, we have one pitcher. So, you know, timeout, blue, four, eight minutes later, they come back. And I appreciate the fact that I was given a key to that. That's a lot of responsibility. But I would like the bathrooms up and running again, and it's also a security issue. As you know, there was an incident that happened at Harbor with one of our young ladies walked, and she was accosted by a gentleman. So, the closer they are to me, the more I can keep my eye on them, the better. And if they can't be up and running, I'd like to know why, first of all, because they were functioning before Davidson Field. But I'd also be willing to have our boosters help with money, so let's just give me an answer as to why and maybe help me get them back up and running.
Okay.
I can respond.
Okay, yes.
This is Mr. Holcomb right here. He is the Chief Operations Officer, and he will email Mr. Bolton, and he'll get together with you to discuss the issue.
I'd love that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, Stephen Borick.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Directors. I speak to you tonight as a friend of a parent in the district and as an individual who's served this community for over 10 years as a senior prosecutor in the Orange County District Attorney's Office. I've served this community as an elected official, and I'm currently walking your districts and hearing about this board. And I'm here to express a frustration and a disappointment. Two weeks ago, we came here with a lawyer expressing a sincere concern about private information of a six-year-old little girl, a student in your district that was disclosed, and we asked for an investigation. We came here asking for an informal investigation, asking you guys to resolve the issue informally. And we were stunned, having worked in government. We got a response within 48 hours that you had completed your investigation, that there was nothing more to do. The complainant, Dr. Gina Nick, a parent in your district, she wasn't even interviewed. I wish somebody had interviewed me because I was there, I was present when Trustee Yelsey confronted us in the registrar of voters and made clear she had information regarding enrollment of a six-year-old little girl. I watched you. I stood across from you when you said she wasn't even enrolled, you just moved into the district. The question is, how did she get that information so soon? And more importantly, what's so crucial for all of you here to do is to ensure that that sacred, important information was protected. And what we got back instead was, after 48 hours, a summary, our investigation is closed. So, our next step is to go, we've written a letter to the California Department of Education to get to the bottom of this, Trustee Yelsey, how you and your friends in the community have gotten information about where this little girl lives, when she, where she used to go to school, and how you got it so soon. Within two days, you questioned a member of the Newport Beach City Council about your opponent using specific enrollment information. So, I'm thoroughly disappointed and stunned as a DA. We would have never have closed a case without speaking to the victim. So, please, maybe you want to rethink your summary conclusions and actually conduct a real investigation. real investigation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, may I?
Sure.
I would just like the public to know that we did conduct a thorough investigation. The issue was, did private information from our school district system get out through either an employee or an official? And we found that that did not happen. There was nothing that's within the control of the district was ever shared with anyone. No district official, no board member, no parent got into our student information system and got any information. That's what we were asked to do, and that's the work we completed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Gloria Kelly.
Hi, good evening. I'm here representing Coast Mesa High School and the marching band and color guard. I'm chairing the, I'm the chairperson for the tournament that we're going to be having on October 13th at our still-new Mustang Field. We're going to be having over 20 bands coming from all around, mostly Southern California, to compete in this marching band and color guard competition. It is the 32nd Annual South Coast Invitational Marching Band Tournament. We're doing this in part with the California State Band Championship. They are the, I lost the word. Governing, sorry, thank you. They're the governing agency that does the whole tournament, so this is going to be our first time that we're going to be portraying our 2018 field show. It's entitled Adventure Bound. So, we want to extend an invitation to all the board members to come out. It will be on Saturday, like I said, October 13th. I'll be emailing you the flyer once it gets approved to be distributed. Right now, it's still in process, so we're also inviting all the schools, all of our feeder schools, to, that are in band, if they come wearing their band shirt, they're going to be allowed into the tournament for free, so they can, we're trying to encourage, you know, to see what they can do with their music, as long as they continue playing, if they do it through high school. So yeah, we just want to extend that invitation. So we have like 20 bands, some of them are going to be as small as less than 35 bands, 35 members per band, and like, we have six that are coming between 100 and 140 members per band. So we're going to have a lot of students on campus and all around, playing their instruments and showing all their hard work. And I'm proud to say I have two of my own in the marching band, and so we just want to show you our field, show you what we're doing, and show our appreciation, so you're invited. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
I love band.
I know, I know. Are you sure there's going to be enough seats for all those? Okay, you're working on it. Okay, Cynthia Blackwell.
Good evening. This is Suicide Awareness Month, as you might be aware, and I was very glad to see the district is offering two mental health workshops in October, so very excited about that, thank you very much. The Wellness Task Force, which I heard about in February, I emailed Phil's office on February 15th about becoming a member. He said, "Sure, you'll go on the list." I emailed March 5th to find out when the next meeting was. We had several emails back and forth, because they're supposed to meet every quarter, and it's now September. We had a meeting scheduled on September 22nd for the task force. I emailed that morning to confirm that it was still on, and was told, "Oh, no, that got changed, we don't have a new date yet." So, I like to be involved in it. I think that's one math at work, because in seven months, supposed to be meeting every quarter, hasn't met yet, so just FYI to you guys. And then, another thing is that we were at a neighborhood gathering the other day, and some parents were complaining about the eyewash situation over at Coast Mesa High School. Apparently OSHA's been contacted, and my son was there, who graduated in 2012, and his girlfriend was there, and they said, "Oh yeah, that was an issue when we were going to Mesa with the eyewashes and the science labs." I'm like, "Oh, brother." So I figured it out, 180 students per science teacher, times seven years, that's 1,260 kids who've been exposed to an unsafe condition in the science labs at Coast Mesa High School with eyewash slash drains slash possible electrical fires. So, just want to let you know, have a good night, thanks.
Thank you.
Really quickly, that's a safety issue, I'd like Mr. Holcomb to respond to that.
To let you know, we did walk through when OSHA was here with them. They provided us with their findings, and we responded to those findings. They came back and walked through the site with us, once again, after we completed the necessary repairs to the couple of places where we found it wasn't working the way it should be.
So the eyewash is...
Yeah, eyewashes have been repaired.
Good, okay, good. Okay. Claire Rettfield.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Claire Rettfield. I attended a board meeting about benefits and was stunned at the dump Swan in testimonies, and I said nothing, because I figured, well, the new textbook, this too would pass, but now that Swan has become a political football, in the vein of Colin Kaepernick, I'm here to take a knee and to bring a little Swan swag to you today. The continuing attacks on Newport Mesa Unified School District and the superintendent, Colin Swan, the ruination of students and teachers illustrates the deep-rooted misunderstanding of the Common Core, its complexity and global challenges, and highlights the district's branding dilemma in better engaging parents and teachers, and communities to work together to make the Common Core a success. The school board and superintendent should be applauded and appreciated for the Herculean efforts made in response to a national crisis facing them. Elementary teachers unprepared to teach complex math reasoning, research uncovered by the National Council for Teaching Mathematics. Unbeknownst to the public, all school districts wrestle with an alarming reality, legions of elementary school teachers with limited math background. K-6 teacher certification programs rarely require more than nine semester hours of mathematics content, and possibly a three-credit method class, and many have had little professional development since completing their major. Swan addressed this crisis through district-funded systematic comprehensive staff development, where coaches modeled best practices. Their goal, to improve both teacher instruction and elevate student learning. The Swan math coaches were charged to meet the highest level of staff development with a vision of capacity building in both teachers' mathematical knowledge and their ability to respond to student thinking. In addition, Swan training encouraged teachers to build on ongoing professional learning communities at each site to learn from each other. For the first time, Swan's stunningly simple instructional delivery model, "I do, you do, we do," standardized effective teaching strategy across the entire district. To understand the complex common core, I bought my college textbook, and it had in there the mean absolute value. I had no idea what that meant in college, but Swan did it for me in sixth grade, they deconstructed it, made it accessible, so every sixth-grade teacher could teach a college standard. Without Swan, teachers would not have been able to implement the new textbook Bridges. Where Swan was a stripped-down Ford Focus, you put in a key, you drove from A to B, Bridges is like a Tesla. All the bells and whistles, you push a button, and you're on a SpaceX flight. It's like, I have no idea what I'm doing. The teacher's manual's so complex, these people go to bed and hold it in their arms and wake up singing, "Swaney, how I love you, how I love you, oh my dear Swaney." Seriously, they're going, but with Swan, the Bridges is genius, it really is, I have to admit. Trust me, Swan was not perfect, and the misprints were annoying and unforgivable. I appreciate the legitimate complaints made by individuals in the community, I'm willing to support them on other issues, as long as we work civilly and transparently for the improvement of schools. What Swan and Bridges did to ultimately, oh, okay, this was my last 10 seconds, it was captured, and when the little kindergartner said to me just last week, he's doing the number corner, and I said, "How did you figure that?" And he looked at me, he said, "You know, Mrs. Rettfield, I don't know what your problem is, you just see it in your brain." And that's what math, the new math construct is dead, and congratulations to all you for having the courage, and thank you, Ms. Yelsey, for being there and asking a lot of our Swan questions for us, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
You said it.
That's it. We're moving on to superintendent's report.
I just wanted to emphasize an issue that was brought up in the presentation by Ray. They're having some really amazing success, but I want the public to understand the hurdles that they have to overcome. You know, most people don't realize that when a student comes from an impacted background, whether it be poverty, a broken home, maybe foster care, those children come to school, maybe 30 million words behind what their middle-class peers have heard when they get to school. That's an incredible, incredible gap that they've got to kind of try to overcome. And so, it's really amazing, the work that's going on, not only at Ray, but at many of our schools, when they get children that can have heard 30 million fewer words than their peers. And you can imagine what that means. They have less context, they have less understanding, they have less experience about what the world is about. You know, and even California, you know, our kids, when they read a math problem about a taxi, well, maybe they haven't been in a taxi, whereas in New York, it happens all the time. So, you know, I just want to emphasize the incredible hurdle that our schools are overcoming with students that come from impacted communities, and really how far behind those students are in their communication and literacy skills, and the incredible Herculean effort being taking place. And to hear the principal talk about dibbles and where our students are with their fundamental reading and vocabulary strategies, that is miraculous. The hard work that they've done to get those kids to come up from that far behind. I mean, I guess you could think about it this way, it would be like starting an Olympic marathon, and you're 50 miles behind already, before they even start the game. So, it's just a real, real hard climb to be able to catch up, even to finish with your peers. So, I just wanted to add that, because I think, I don't want us to underappreciate the hard work that's going on at those schools.
Absolutely. Mrs. Black.
Yes, and I, you know, have to comment, because four years ago, the Board of Education actually went to Dr. Navarro and said, "Something has to be done, because we are seeing the hard work being done in the classroom, but we weren't moving anywhere." And that was year after year, not year over year, it was year after year, new third graders, you know. And Dr. Navarro, you know, came back to us and said, you know, "What do you think about an avid elementary school?" Well, we've all been very well-versed in our secondary schools, and so he worked with staff, and they came to us and talked about, you know, that it wouldn't be an easy thing to happen, you know, it would take a little bit of time, but we have just seen an incredible difference, you know. And also, you know, as frustrating as it is for the community and parents, and this parent as well, going to the Swan, you know, I agree with Mrs. Rettfield, it really helped us find out, by introducing Swan, just how beyond, you know, behind we were in advanced math, or high-level math, or, you know, I mean, it was just very difficult. So we knew we had our, you know, work cut out for us, and Dr. Navarro also came forward and said, you know, "We really need to support our teachers, and they need to do it within," and that's when we did, you know, that process. So, I appreciate you as our leader, making the tough decisions, and, you know, and for each, you know, member of this board, you know, that hung in there, it wasn't fun, and but I really do, going into the classrooms now has been remarkable, and, you know, and when you have your students teaching the math, Common Core math, to their parents in, you know, evening meetings at the school is pretty fantastic. And so, we're not there yet, we have a long ways to go, but I just want you to know you're very appreciated by this board.
Well, wait till we get our parent learning walks going, and we take them through, take our elementary parents through math classes.
And we already have a list of people wanting to do it.
Yes, yes, we'll get there soon.
And board members are the first ones on the list, by the way.
Okay.
Okay, so, moving on, consent calendar.
All items listed under the consent calendar are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion. This includes the consent calendars for business, education services, human resources, student support services, and superintendent. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion, unless members of the board, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Public requests of items to be discussed and/or removed should be submitted in writing prior to the board's consideration of the consent calendar.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Move approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved by Mrs. Black and seconded by Mrs. Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that carries. Moving on to public hearing, 17A, Jeff Trader.
In accordance with AB 1200, which essentially says that before the board enters into an agreement with its bargaining groups, there needs to be a sunshining of the cost of the agreement. And so, there has been a tentative agreement reached with NMFT, and the cost of that agreement is about $4,418,989. And that has been built into your budget, and we have certified that you can afford that cost of that agreement.
That's a good thing. Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing. And we have a speaker, Dr. Doughty.
Good evening again. I wanted to inform the board that when the tentative agreement was reached, it was approved by our membership with greater than 97% approval. We were able to implement a new electronic voting system, as opposed to our vote-by-mail system we've done, and we had about a 45% increase in participation over past years for a similar-type tentative agreement. So, I want to applaud the efforts of the Newport Mesa staff and the HR department, IT department, for helping to facilitate that process. And also, finally, as a reminder to the public, the primary cost related to the salary increase was negotiated over a year ago, and had already been factored in previously, so it wasn't new on this tentative agreement, it had been done about a year ago. Thank you.
Okay. So do we, having no other speakers, I will close the public hearing. And, is that a resolution?
Discussion action.
Okay, discussion action. Ms. Olson.
Yes, thank you. Well, as you can see, we are bringing forward tonight to the board for approval the tentative agreement with NMFT, which will close out officially the negotiations for the 2018-19 school year. And you will note that it actually was reached in August, and so it may seem like this is a little bit delayed, but it really is. Our teachers were on vacation, very, very well-deserved vacation, and so therefore, NMFT needed to wait until they returned, and we're very happy to hear that the electronic system is working for them. So, as Dr. Doughty shared, you will recall that during the previous negotiations, and that the board did approve a 2.5% raise, not only for the 2017-18 school year, but also for this current year of 18-19, and that's noted in the TA. So this agreement will cover the costs of the district benefit unit cap for 2018 and 19, and so we are very pleased to bring it forward to you for approval.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Move approval of tentative agreement between the Newport Mesa Unified School District and the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers for 2018-19.
Second.
Okay, so it is moved by Ms. Yelsey and seconded by Ms. Matoye. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, wonderful, it passes. Okay, 18B. Adopt Resolution 070918 in support of the United Way campaign. Do you have anything else to say about that?
Well, just once again, we'd like to encourage all of our employees to participate. We look forward to building on last year's accomplishment, and our first kickoff meeting will be held in mid-October, and you all get a letter on that, and we look forward to doing a good job this year.
Okay, good.
Move adopt Resolution 070918 in support of the United Way campaign. Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Matoye, seconded by Mrs. Black. Roll call.
Ms. Snell.
Yes.
Ms. Matoye. Yes. Ms. Flores absent, Mr. Dillonports absent, Ms. Franco.
Yes.
Ms. Black.
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to board member reports, start with Shirley.
Sure. I would like to ask Mrs. Jocum, would you look into why the timing of the Suicide Task Force collaboration, getting it together? Force collaboration, getting it together, would you look into that, please? I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, is that the same as the Wellness Committee? Because I saw that the Wellness Committee was...
It's a different thing.
Okay, it's different.
So, you'll recall that when we, I think what Ms. Black was talking about, though, was the Wellness Task Force.
Yeah.
And I remember I said we're going to rename it, which obviously, they haven't done that yet, but I will find out. Dr. DiAgostino is not, he's out of town right now, but I'll find out from him, and we'll follow up on the schedule for that committee.
Get back to...
Yes.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Well, busy first two weeks, busy, busy. I was back-to-school nights, I was able to participate, I know, along with Mrs. Yelsey, in Shoes That Fit, which is a wonderful program by Nordstrom that works with some of our schools, with recommendations from the schools. We get to go out and measure kids' feet. For the first time, we figured out a really great way to do it, by having the kids stand on the stage, so we didn't have to bend over to the floor. That was brilliant, I just want to say. It's nice to see that we're thinking all the time, even for easy things.
Not where I did it.
Well, you did it the first day, I didn't do it on the second day either. College Park is the group that really said, aha, little bells went off. It was, it was really wonderful. I was able to participate in the ribbon-cutting of the library at Polerino Elementary School that IKEA so gracefully and appreciatively redid the whole entire library. So, that meant all the books had to come off the old shelves. One of the things I appreciated the most was the school repurposed all the shelves that were there. I went into a brand-new teacher's classroom, and there were bookshelves from the library in his classroom. It was really exciting to see that, you know, as a brand-new teacher, I had bricks and boards, which we couldn't have now anyway, but it was, it was nice for that to happen. I'll let you talk about the weekend stuff. I did participate. Another stellar moment, the Costa Mesa High School parents last night had two meetings, their PTSA meeting and an ELAC meeting, and over 200 parents participated in those first meetings. That was outstanding and very impressive. And it warms my heart to go to a meeting when there's that many people there, and active and questioning, and Officer Torres gave some information, and parents were active and exciting. So, it's just a really wonderful thing, and when we come to our committee reports, I have another report.
Okay. Mrs. Franco?
No report.
Mrs. Black?
Yeah, I'm just a quick, I just want to acknowledge PTA for doing the, you know, the e-memberships.
Oh, love that.
It's so fantastic.
So good, yeah.
Because for the first time, we can just click, instead of, and they're all different. So, that was the other thing that was frustrating, so it was, you know, really fantastic, so we appreciate it, and we will be cheerleading this for other schools that haven't adopted it yet. So, kudos to everyone, make sure they know that we appreciate it.
Yeah.
That's it.
In addition to all the back-to-school nights, a couple of events. One, I went to the Harborview Flag Deck last week, and was able to introduce our new resource officer, Officer Febrie, who is working in Newport Beach, and I know she's really well-received. She's already been, I think, to all the schools in the area, just to introduce herself. And I really, again, want to thank the city and the Police Department for giving us an additional SRO. And then, I did, was asked to speak at the PTA meeting for Newport Coast last week, and I spoke on school safety, so I went through all our procedures that we're doing, and even though we put it on the website, and that you did a great job of getting it out on the website, we can't tell people enough, because everybody was real appreciative, that again, I was going over all the safety measures. So, I think we just need to keep saying some of these things over and over again to provide better communication. And lastly, I just want to mention, and the timing was perfect for this, we have a parent who is on the board of the Pediatric Cancer Research Foundation, and tomorrow, they have a dine and donate, so I think 50% of what you eat at restaurants will go to Pediatric Cancer Research, I think we're all concerned about that. And the restaurants included in this, you can look it up online, but it's pcrf/kids.org, but the restaurants just in the area, and you can go breakfast, lunch, or dinner, California Pizza Kitchen, Aviazel Ranchito, Chipotle, Fresh Brothers, Hop Dotty, Jersey Mike's, Jews It Up, Rothschilds, Ruby's, the Cannery, the Stan's. So, there's a lot of restaurants in this area, so anybody in the area who eats at any of those restaurants tomorrow, any time of day, the, it will be donated to Pediatric Cancer Research.
Is it any branch of them?
In the Newport Coast Mesa area, yes.
Thank you.
Did you say it's pcrf.com?
It's, it's www.pcrf/kids.org.
Oh, okay.
And Mrs. Snell, I forgot something.
Okay.
I know. On October 14th, Costa Mesa High School will be having a parent cleanup day, so if you're bored on a Saturday morning between 9:00 and 12:00, join us, we're going to have a fun old day, scraping gum off the sidewalk and cleaning up shelves, and just doing all the things that we didn't quite get done before school started, and I know there's going to be some fabulous tacos, so I wanted to put that shout out for it. It's going to be a fun day, I'm looking forward to it.
Who knows about the tacos that you're looking at?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Back-to-school nights, yes, I got to Wilson and Victoria and Adams, and just really, it's always really fun for me to go to Adams, too, because that's where my kids went, so I sit there, and it just reminds me that they're old now. Still taking money, but not that old. And we went to the...
Fish Fry?
No, the Costa Mesa Oktoberfest.
Oh, yes, we did go to the Oktoberfest.
You can talk about that.
Oh, we had, thank you very much. We had, well, I had a big, long list of things that I did, and if I say them all first, nobody else has anything to say. Costa Mesa High School had their gala, which was an Oktoberfest at Halecrest, and lest anybody would say, why did you have an Oktoberfest in September? In Germany, they do their Oktoberfest in September, so it's a fun way for the community to get together, and there were auction items, and live auction items. It's a fundraiser, but it's more of a fundraiser, and it was, a great time was had by all, so that was nice, and that was, that was...
That was it, okay, so I, so we went to the Costa Mesa Community Run, and we normally run the 10K, but my toe hurt, and her...
And we have, on occasion, it's good that they have age groupings.
Yeah, yeah, so, but it was great. It's fun to see all the kids participate, and the families, and it was, and it was great weather for running. It was overcast, yeah. And then, we also went, or I went to the Fish Fry, and I just want to thank Dr. B for, I think you did yourself this year on the fish, it was the best ever, so really good. That's always a fun event, I hope they continue to have it there in Costa Mesa, yeah, I'm hoping. Okay, so, do you have anything else to say?
You have board committee?
Yeah.
You have your committee reports?
Oh, I'm sorry, committee reports.
I have a committee report. Mr. Holcomb and I attended the Costa Mesa City Liaison Meeting, which consists of the Costa Mesa Sanitation, Costa Mesa Water, City of Costa Mesa, and Newport Mesa, and it was a very enlightening meeting, and two things that stood out, well, first, there's, their sanitation department is working with our schools to provide incentives with indoor, inside the outdoors for zero-waste lunches, and from someone who's done that at their school, it's really, really hard to do a zero-waste lunch. That means whatever you bring to school, you bring back, and that there's nothing in the trash can.
Wow.
It's a good thing to go for, it's really hard to accomplish. But one of the other things that they're doing is a battery recycling contest. In the past, the elementary schools did a newspaper, I mean, a phone book recycling, and for a while, that was great, but that's back in the day, some of you might remember, a phone book was a big book with phone numbers in it, that was about this big. And since phone books, if you even get one, is only about this big now, they decided to do something even better, which is a battery recycling contest. And I gave the flyers to our executive director for elementary, it's for the elementary schools, it's between September 17th and April 5th, they can sign up anytime, that's a long time. They collect used batteries, and turn them into the sanitation department, and they weigh them. This is significant, first prize is $1,200 for the school, and it's not that hard if you have a great big recycle bucket, and people just bring your batteries to school. Every school that participates will win at the very minimum, or earn $100 back for their school, and everything is by weight. So, to me, it's like, well, why wouldn't you do this? Because it's no, it's, this one's not a hard one, you don't have to have a giant bin outside in your parking lot. So, I'm encouraging, at the next principals' meeting, if I need to come and be a cheerleader, I'd be happy to, and it's, they're probably saying, no, we'll do it, but it's a really wonderful opportunity. And the other thing that was kind of exciting is that Fire Station, Costa Mesa Fire Station Number One is doing their grand opening on Saturday morning. There will be tours, they totally replaced it, in case you don't know, that's the one right next to the post office on Adams, and it's a state-of-the-art facility. The fire department has been in it for a few weeks now, and that's good, because they can get all the bugs out, but it's, it's a beautiful building, well, not live, living bugs, just, you know, the punch list at the end, where, wait, wait a minute, this, this wasn't put on the right way. The bugs were before they tore it down and did it. Anyway, it was, it was a really informative meeting.
Good, okay.
Just real quickly, I know that Mrs. Black mentioned Ray, and how avid was a really great idea. I do need to make sure that credit goes where credit is due. Avid was not my idea. I had other ideas, and we had a strong intellectual debate.
You're not friends with the avid people?
I am, I am, I am.
No.
I am a fan of avid, and so, when I lost my debate, we got back together, and it was either Mr. Lee Sung or Mrs. Astorita, they came, one of them came up and said, what about avid? And I didn't have any ammunition to fight back, to be honest, because it was such a good idea. So, the credit really goes to the team, we push, we push each other to really try to figure out what, what is the right formula, and what will make the biggest difference, and they get all the credit for that really well-thought-out idea that led to what we have now at Ray. The other thing, I would like to comment on the retirement that both Mr. Doughty and Gary, Dr. Doughty, shared. You know, we're on track to be, to be in the black by 2030, I believe. That's been very painful for employees, and I want the public to know, it's not a free system, employees pay into the retirement system, and districts pay in for retirees into the retirement system. It is not, it's not a free ride for public sector employees, but it's been very difficult. The employee increases we're done with, I believe, is that right, Mrs. Olson, Ms. Olson? Yeah, yeah?
About two more years.
Oh, two more years, so they still have two more years of pain.
2020 is the...
And then, we still will be going up to a significant amount, still beyond that. So, there's still a lot that we have to balance in that, but in the end, whenever, whatever that target date is, the retirement system will once again be in balance, the first time released since 2001, which is, it was always in the black until 2001, and then they made a change in the retirement benefits, and that's what threw it into the red. But I do appreciate, you know, that CalPERS is solvent, like Gary said, and then Britt working behind the scenes, because the only way that our contributions are going to change is if it comes from state law. We don't have any control over that as a district, and so, it has to be behind the scenes, working with the legislature. So, I do want to say, yeah, that's been, that's been a difficult thing for employees and for districts to absorb, but it's the only way to keep the system solvent.
And CalPERS is solvent, but we have increasing contribution for the district in CalPERS, as well as STIRS.
Yes, yes. CalPERS is a little different in that their board, their governing board determines the increases, whereas CalSTIRS has to be done by the legislature, and so, they get, there's a little more, it's easier to come to agreement with the members on the CalPERS system than it is to get all the legislators to agree as to what the increase is going to be, which is another reason we kept, the red kept growing, because there was no action taken. And, you know, I, little history, they made that decision when the tech sector was really booming, and there was a lot of money coming in, and they projected wrong.
Yeah.
So, you know, be careful what your assumptions are, because they can have dire consequences.
That's because Mr. Reed wasn't in charge, because he didn't...
He thought he was.
I was going to say, he would have kept us solvent moving forward. Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Yes, just to let you know, you might recall, a few months ago, you approved an MOU with between the district and CSCA regarding orientations, and we just, there will be four throughout the year, but we just had our first one this past week, for new classified employees, with a focus of being successful in their new position, and really stressing the importance of protecting their professional reputation and meeting professional expectations coming into a school setting versus other settings that they may have served in. And so, alongside with CSCA, Pam Saunders, our CSCA president, and Amy Gonzalez, her labor rep, also presented the benefits of CSCA, and so, it was very, very well-received, and it was a wonderful opportunity for us to have that focused time with some new employees on what it takes to be a successful employee in a school system.
Cool, great, thank you.
Well, you'll recall, a few months ago, you were asking us, as we were rolling out Chromebooks, about students who might not have access to the internet, and so, Mr. Bobovich and his team have been working with our School Services Department, Dr. Jocum and her team, to identify the students who could benefit from having those, and we're currently in the process of ordering just a little less than 100 Wi-Fi, cellular-based Wi-Fi devices, so that those can be checked out by the students who need them.
Is it a, I thought it was a module, it plugs into their phone? No.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Bobovich, could you help us with this a little bit?
Oh, you're here.
He is here tonight.
Wow, he was quiet.
I didn't even see you.
Good evening. It's not a module, it's a, it's a little device, about that size, and it sort of sits on its own.
Oh, okay.
And you can connect your Chromebook, or phone, or whatever else to it, then it just provides a shared wireless connection in a small, you know, nearby vicinity.
So, anywhere on the west side, or wherever?
Yeah, anywhere you are, as long as you have T-Mobile coverage, you can have a Wi-Fi connection for your mobile device.
Okay, well, that's great.
It's like a little mini router-y.
So, you've got 100 of them, and then, Hope...
Project Hope Alliance?
Hope Clinic is...
Project Hope Alliance has...
Project Hope Alliance is figuring out who needs them.
Well, they, they have worked with Dr. Jocum's team to identify who the students were, so that we could get a good list together of who might need those.
Okay, good, that's great, thank you.
That's wonderful.
So, again, you know, you run a far-flung organization, and there's money involved in that, and we, every once in a while, we scan the marketplace to see what's available in terms of banking services, and we've done that, and we found, we think we found a marked improvement in the organization that can provide better service at a better cost, and so we look forward to bringing that recommendation to you at the next meeting. And then, in terms of some pleasure reading recommendations, Getting Down to Facts II was published on September 17th, 2018, you probably have heard about it, but it really is a great synopsis and great reading for folks like you who are policymakers, and some of the recommendations, or some of their findings included that funding levels remain inadequate for local education agencies to meet the state's policy goals, and critical funding issues, such as pensions and special education facilities, have the potential to worsen inequities and destabilize the system if not addressed. So, it sounds like, you know, applicable reading for Halloween, but if you'd like a copy, I'd be happy to send you a PDF of that.
Somebody wrote a book. I already knew that.
Yes.
That's true, Edsors.
Okay.
You can go online and get it, you know.
Just put in Getting Down to...
I will send you a PDF.
Getting Down to Facts II, just...
Okay, good. Thank you.
It's actually very easy reading, it's just very depressing reading.
American Horror Story.
If we need another 22 billion, you know, to fully fund.
That's one big, big sale.
I have just two quick reminders, one I already heard tonight, but College and Career Night, Wednesday, October 17th, at the Orange County Fair and Events Center, there'll be over 200 colleges, universities, trade schools, military recruiters, from 6:30 to 9:00, and if you've ever been there, the energy in that room is amazing, it's, it's one of the best events that we have all year long, it's a great event. And also, next Monday night, Pursuing Victory With Honor, we'll be doing the training for our parents, coaches, athletic directors, and administrators. Rob Weigod, the CIF commissioner, will be here to train all of our people about athletics, so.
What time does that start?
Six o'clock.
This probably won't be the last time that I say this, but I think it's important to recognize the incredible amount and quality of work that our teachers and support staff are really embarking on this year, from our K-5, Year Two adoptions. You know, there's a little more comfort, but still an enormous amount of learning and work going into that implementation, to sixth through eighth grade, implementation of new math, that is new, new math materials. And so an enormous amount of work going into that and support behind that, as well as our sixth through eighth history, social studies adoption process is off and running. Starting October 22nd will be our first pilot. And then also, our, our math pilot in high school is off and running. We met today, had a great meeting, lots of good input and thought behind, you know, those materials and using those to maximize student success in the classroom. So just a shout out and a thank you to all the incredible hard work that our teachers and support staff are doing.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, first of all, just a quick comment about...
Yes.
A quick comment about Avid. We've been talking about that, and I do appreciate...
You were going to say, "It's my idea, right?"
It's a team effort. But, but I do want to say that another key partner in this was Human Resources, who had to find a home...
Yes.
For the large number of teachers who wanted to go to another spot in our district and do good work there, and really working individually with every teacher to find the best match, and then to build that staff that's, as you can see, doing some incredible work together. And I tell you, I was very, very proud of, of what they're doing there. So, so thank you for that. But I do want to make an announcement to the board, that there is an incredible grant opportunity that's being offered by the state. And we, these are large competitive grants, minimum, and I'll get your attention with this, minimum of $500,000 awards. But it is competitive. And we have joined in on a consortium with our Orange County Department of Education and several other Orange County districts to submit two applications. I will talk about one, and Dr. Jocum will talk about the other. But the, the first one is in the category of well-rounded education for students, something that we believe in, our philosophy here. And the focus of this application is going to be providing VAPA opportunities for traditionally underserved student populations in the area of VAPA. And as you know, that's an area I'm very fond of. So when this came, this opportunity came up, we did jump on board. It was a very quick turnaround to commit. But the, the focus is, the underserved populations would be students with special needs and students in alternative ed settings. So we're excited about that opportunity. We're working on a very short timeframe to submit that application before the deadline at the end of this month. And just want to let you know that we're working hard behind the scenes as part of a consortium in that project.
Wonderful. Okay.
So the other Title IV is related to student wellness. And again, it might be some of the same districts. There's different districts that applied for each of the grants. And we had a meeting at the county office, and because you have to spend the grant you have from January through September to spend the money, and you can't supplant, you know, anything you're currently doing, it lends itself to really doing a lot of professional development. And we met, and there was a list of 20 different professional development training opportunities that each district could say, "Yes, we want this, no, we don't," or, you know, "We're already doing this." And so we looked at them. So it's going to be very individualized, and I think that's what we really like, is that, you know, there are some areas, PBIS, where we feel we are ahead of a lot of other districts. And so we don't want to get, "Oh, well, they're only going to do PBIS," you know, again. So we get to kind of really be unique and specific about what training opportunities we want to be able to use with our district. So that'll be, that will be a great opportunity for us. A couple other things from me. One is that Ms. Yelsey reminded me with, with her comments, that we will have the new SRO come and be introduced to the board. So we'll do that, so you all don't have to try and find her, right? Isn't it? The other thing is that there, as, as we've kind of talked about, there's different parent education opportunities coming up in October. So we have our, our special education, a community advisory committee, doing a presentation on mental health for students with special needs, and that's with our consultant, Dr. Lerner. And that is Thursday, October 11th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at Harper. Or then the alternative is Tuesday evening, October 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00. So, and that flyer has already gone out, and, and we're getting some feedback on that. The other one that the, I'm just editing the flyer, is our, our parent education series in conjunction with Harbor Council PTA. And as they said, the first one's coming up, October the 4th, at Corona Del Mar, by Vlad Anderson on Ways to Keep Your Child Safe. So we're, we're getting the word out on all of these, and they're just going to keep coming every month, different parent training opportunities. So we're excited about that.
Great, great. Great, great stuff. Okay, anybody have any more great stuff?
I would just like to thank both Van and Isaiah for sticking it out to the very end.
Thank you.
Way to go, guys.
Good job.
Yeah. Oops.
Oh, go ahead.
Oops, wait. Use your mic.
Yeah, use the mic.
On the parent education sessions, my question was, is I don't know, do the parents have to, I want to get the information correct.